I'd like to call the January meeting of the Central School Board to order. And I would like you again, welcoming to the Central School Board District Meeting for January 2019. Comments from the community are entertained during the time designated under Communications, Public Comments. If you wish to speak to the Board, please fill out a comment card and turn it in to the Board Secretary or the Board Chair at the beginning of the meeting. Speakers' comments in this forum are limited to three minutes, but the Board welcomes additional information in writing. Personnel laws prohibit the Board from hearing public complaints about an individual and an open meeting. All complaints must go through the Board's approved process as outlined in Board Policy KL. This forum may be located on our website or by calling the District Office. Typically, a speaker's comment is taken under advisement to allow time for the Board to review an issue. However, the Board Chair or other Board members may ask a speaker for additional information or may convey to the speaker some information that addresses their comment. Please note on the speaker card if you would like to receive follow-up communication and if so, what avenue is preferred. Thank you again for your attendance at this meeting of the Central School Board. And with that, Darcy, would you lead us in the fight?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Right along. You're up.
Just two changes to the agenda under number five, Communication Optional, Other Reports and Standing Reports. We will not have share out from both Central Education Association or the Oregon School Employees Association for January. So that is one of the changes to the agenda. And then I get the honor to begin the meeting. January is School Board Appreciation Month, and so we're going to sort of do this for two months. So tonight, we're just going to share the proclamation, and I'm going to read from the state of Oregon, and then we'll do some celebrations in February as well. So we're going to sort of prolong it this year. And you all know how very important you are to me, and so we have the ability to do that, so we're going to do that. So tonight, I just want to share with, from a public standpoint, the State of Oregon proclamation from the office of the Governor and its states. Whereas Oregonians rely on public education to ensure a prosperous quality of life and strong economic health of Oregon. And whereas locally-elected boards fulfill leadership roles and serve as the conduit through which teachers, parents, businesses, and communities demonstrate the care, creativity, and support that lead to student achievement. And whereas public schools nurture and train diverse student populations to the best of their ability, whatever their resources, to give students the knowledge, skills, and opportunities they need to succeed. And whereas Board members build the framework that makes it possible for education organizations to teach Oregon's children. And whereas the committed men and women who serve on the boards of Oregon's 197 school districts, 19 educational service districts, and 17 community colleges deserve recognition and thanks for their dedication to the education needs of the people of Oregon. Now therefore, Kay Brown, Governor of the State hereby proclaim January 2019 to be School Board Recognition Month in Oregon and encourage all Oregonians to join in this observance. So I again cannot say as the superintendent how appreciative I am of each and every one of you, the work that we are doing and get to continue to do, not only through this year but as we continue forward. So I just want to say I truly appreciate and I'm very pleased to be able to work with all of you each and every day. So thank you for what you do for not only this school district but the great communities of both Independence and Long Mice. So thank you. And we're going to stretch this out, so.
That means parties at the next three days.
That's what you would like.
Okay, so who do we get first? ASBAC, Power Peers, or FFA?
Do we have ASBAC?
I think there's one or two here. A young Mr. Love didn't come tonight? Okay, Power Peers, next. Oh, we got two.
Hi, I'm Kendra Yezinova, junior Power Peers. And for the month of December, Power Peers mostly focused on our winter celebration, which is a big celebration we have before our winter break that has a bunch of different activities that all the students participate in. And we, this year, decided to include a spirit court, which included about 16 students who dressed up the most, and we gave them a little prize at the end and kind of rewarded them. And we would like to thank our community donations. We had Roth's, our local movie theater, ASBAC donated some snowball tickets, and also the Prom community donated some tickets. And it was really inclusive, and we really appreciated all the support from them. Also, our pantry is doing really well, and at the last meeting, you guys asked us to bring up some of the needs that we need. And for this month, we are really low on some snacks, like granola bars and fruit snacks, and also some deodorant is really needed in the pantry. And for the focus for this month, we watched Piper Tigers, and so we decided that we would really work on as a group resiliency and kind of staying together as a group and helping all the students. And that's all we have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. That would be a few cool pictures, huh? All right. You guys didn't have any fun, right? It was all working.
Exactly.
And if you would like to grow a couple of those chairs, you can stand or sit, it is up to you. And now you need luck today.
All right, so I'm going to introduce us. So we're the Central FFA. This is five of our officer team. We're missing one. And so it was us five plus Lynn Thomas and also Abby's dad, David Valencia, as our chaperones. And we went to Indianapolis, Indiana, October 22nd through the 27th for a National FFA convention, and we're going to go through it, and each of us is going to introduce themselves.
My name's Sawyer Hartford.
Great. Great.
I'm the junior, and I'm the president.
I'm Abby Valencia. I'm a junior, and I'm the treasurer.
I'm Priscilla. I'm a senior, and I'm the secretary.
I'm Caleb Cooper. I'm a junior, and I'm the secretary.
I'm Antonio Martinez. I'm a senior, and I'm the vice president.
So our first day, we flew out on the 22nd. We left the school at nine, and we just flew all day, and we didn't get to Indianapolis until 11:30. So we didn't really count that as a day, but our first full day, we spent it at the Indy Zoo. But first, we started off with some breakfast at Denny's as a group, and so that's our group picture at Denny's. We saw, we walked through all of the exhibits. We got their scene of day opened, and we had tickets to go to the Dolphin Show, which was the first for all of us. And we saw things like bugs, spiders, and chimpanzees and lions. And then the picture on the left is of us at the Dolphin Show. And so that was pretty cool because it was a new experience for all of us.
So on the, so that second day, we were in Indianapolis. We spent all day at the zoo. And Wednesday, we went and we kind of traveled that day. So we first started at the Indianapolis Motor Speedway. So we started, I was like really early, in my opinion, and so six-ish Indianapolis time. So we got to see the racetrack, the finish line. That's famous for it's made of all brick. And we got to walk through the museum, like see an informational, like video kind of movie, that kind of just did a little more historical stuff of the Speedway. The car on the bottom is the, oh, I can't remember, but it's one of the first winning cars of the Indianapolis Motor Speedway, and then the group picture.
So after we got done at the Speedway, we went down to Kentucky to go to Louisville Slugger. We only went through the museum. They do like a tour where you can make a bat, I think, and we didn't get to do that, but we got to walk through the museum. And we got to look at things like bats used by MLB players, like Babe Ruth and stuff like that. So that was pretty cool. And we got to see different, like, I think there were wax figures of players. And then there was like a shop there that we got to look through and pick out some stuff, so.
What?
Oh, yeah, and Oregon State was featured because we won national championships. I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah.
So on our first real day of National Convention, where we got to go to the Expo and stuff, we got to go to the opening session. And while we were there at opening session, we got to hear from National FFA Advisor Steve Brown, who also came to our school last year to take a tour of it and see what we're doing. And we also got to hear from Kyle Shealy, who talked about how it took one person to bring someone up or down. Time to leave. We did a lot of workshops while we were there, and so we all had to go to different workshops and kind of bring that back to our chapter, and so we can put that through our community and other ways we can get that involved. So the one I went to was called Time to Lead. And so pretty much what we did is we put together community plans and plans for a community event. So. About every single part of putting together a successful community event, but at the end of it, we put it all together, and we were able to make plans for our own community event. It was a really good workshop that I hope to bring to the classroom someday.
Okay, so we decided to do one as a group. So this is the one we did as a group where we got to go in and we got to learn how to improve our program of activities for our chapter. And we also learned about different fundraiser ideas, and we got to talk with different groups that were in that workshop and get different ideas from them and share our ideas. So it was good to bring everybody together, and we also learned how to like bring our community in more with our fundraisers and stuff like that.
So my workshop was called So You Think You Can Lead. And we discovered our personality types, our strengths, and how to use them to work efficiently in a team. And we learned that using other people's strengths as well as our own lead to the best success.
So while we were there, the next few days, we kind of just spent it at the Expo. I've been a part of a lot of different events, and this is the biggest Expo I've ever been to, and I actually had to go buy new shoes because my heels were not letting me walk anymore. But at the Expo, there's a ton of vendors, like universities, business owners, mentors, as well as presenters. And then Microsoft had a Blue Room where they just give away like these goody bags, and so that one was really busy, that like, it was hard to try to get into it. But during this, we found like new fundraiser ideas that we've already actually used in the winter. We used one of the fundraisers that we learned about there, scholarship opportunities, and also ways to get involved in the agriculture industry, as well as getting to meet different people while we were there from other chapters, as well as people making like our shirts and our officer jackets, and being able to bring those resources back to our own chapter. And then that, on Thursday afternoon, we went to the third general session. And so these were held at Baker's Life Fieldhouse, and it was super hard to get into, and like there was a ton of people. But there we got to hear the retiring address from the Southern Region Vice President Ian Bennett, and he just talked about like his experiences through FFA and how it kind of got him to the position that he was at as a national officer. And then we also got to see the presentation of American Star Awards.
That was on TV. I watched it for not an hour and gave up. It was really long. I feel for you guys. It was a long night.
It was like a three-hour session. I think that one was the longest session we sat through, and we were all kind of dozing off.
It was, it was some amazing people they were introducing though.
Yeah, it was at 7:30, but we had woken up at 5:00 that morning, so we were kind of tired.
So my workshop, I went to, one of them, I went to #TeachAg, a national campaign to increase the amount of Ag teachers nationwide. So they talked about how the need for Ag teachers is growing every year, and the need for Ag education is growing with every generation, with less, generation knowing less. So we talked about getting to the right Ag ed programs for like masters or undergrad programs, doing the right stuff in colleges to get you ready for if you do enter the classroom, and just making the right connections while in college for if you do plan to become a teacher.
So one of the workshops that I went to was Tweeting Transparencies. So this really talked about how social media has really grown, especially like in our ages. And so we, they went through talking about how miscommunication, miscommunication is very easy, especially like if you're communicating through text or like you see a post. And so there we learned how to like stop assuming and always look for the answer, ask questions, and make sure that you're not just answering it just because, but also stating like who it's coming from, using your resources, and stating your resources, and knowing that communication really is key, especially through social media.
So after a long day of walking around Expo, okay, a very long day, our teacher decided to take us to a place where we were apparently going to go play some random game with the state officers while everybody else got to go to Garth Brooks concert. But they decided to surprise us with tickets to the Garth Brooks concert, and we got to spend the entire time with the state officers. We had a great time there and got to hang out with many other people from other chapters. And as the thunder rolled, we danced the night away.
So cheeky.
I know. So our last night at National Convention, we decided we were going to go to a rodeo. It was called the World's Toughest Rodeo, and we met up with another Oregon chapter where we just had a really good time enjoying our last day at National Convention.
So we just want to extend a big thank you to our advisor Lynn Thomas, our alumni, for helping us pay for the trip to our chaperone, Abby's dad, David Valencia, and, there's one more. And to the Board. Yeah. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you guys for an amazing presentation.
Thanks for sharing.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody have any public comment cards?
There's no public here.
Okay. All right, so next up. Denise?
Cease.
There's no.
There's no reports from either association.
Well, she's holding a paper. I thought she wanted to.
No, I confirmed with her.
Okay, all right. I was giving her one last shot. I heard her say that, but, okay. Cease, you're up.
Thank you. You should have in your packet my summary financial report. That is the appropriations as of November 30th. And finally, this one does reflect all of the changes with regards to salary wages that were negotiated in our union contracts. So those adjustments are reflected in the actuals as well as retroactive pay. So we did pay retroactive pay, and that is included, as well as we've adjusted the balances of contract for the rest of the year, so that encumbrance number is reflected there as well. And the two areas where it does look like there would have been some over expenditures, they're not really over expended, they might be over encumbered, but those will both be taken care of in your action agenda if you so elect. And then I did mention to you that we were a little bit concerned about the effect of the salary increases on food service, partially because their budget is so heavy in labor, and it is a little bit more difficult to reappropriate money within that fund. And so I just mentioned here in my summary that, just to kind of show you how food service is broken down, basically out of their total appropriated budget, 28% of all of that is wages, 25% is for taxes and benefits, and 32% of their budget is in food costs. So it's a little bit difficult if we say, let's start, you know, finding ways to cut in the food service. Not a lot of ways to do that, right? We can't, we just don't have a lot of extra supplies, not even a lot of maintenance. So today, I mentioned in my report that Alex Singer would be sharpening his pencil a bit. He did that today. We are going to be able to make some adjustments, projecting out sort of what we had set aside for future maintenance or for future supplies. Looks like we'll be able to cut off some of those encumbrances as well as watch the spending. So hopefully, we will not be in a position where we're looking at additional appropriations for food service or cutting into their reserves. They do have some of that carryover for emergencies, but we think we'll be able to manage within the current appropriations. So the encumbrance, is that supplies or salaries or both? Both. Both. So encumbrances includes the employee contract, employment agreements, and then, for example, we have $200,000 set aside for our food suppliers, and so that does include both. Any other questions about the financial report? I did put in in my cover sheet a little bit about facilities, that sort of a couple of, one scheduled thing and one unscheduled facilities report. The scheduled facilities report was, today was our first day of operation for our portables at Ash Creek Elementary. I'm looking at Principal Wildfang. I guess everybody got out there and used the portables?
Yes, we got everybody there this morning and safe and sound and excited and happy and careful.
Great. It took quite an effort, obviously, leading up to it, but over the break, the Principal Wildfang, her husband, our maintenance department, our tech guys, custodians, and the teachers themselves were in there getting themselves organized and in place. We didn't just move people out of the building into the portables, we moved people around. Remember, we had our Title I teacher in the library, behind the librarian's desk. We had people in the little pods. So there was quite a bit of musical chairs and some planning, and things really helped us out, but you never know until that last minute, but we got them in there, so that's Our unscheduled facilities report, it's too bad it's dark outside because you could look out the window and see it, but I believe you all saw, were sent photographs. We were, I was awakened the morning of January 2nd from a call from the alarm company about, wasn't actually called about a fire, actually called because the electrical system actually tripped the breaker before the smoke detector went off. So we have reason to believe that it was in our electrical systems. We are working with our insurance company. They've been great. We've got plans to, basically, within a few days, we'll be able to just demolish that, get it out of there, and then figure out what we're going to do with that space or what our needs are to replace that. That building has been used for the last five years as the Office for Central Youth Sports. They are, they are working with us. They are going to try to find some additional space to locate, but a lot of their supplies, uniforms, equipment, things like that are stored offsite. They don't keep those over here in this office. Different coaches and coordinators keep those things in other storage spaces. Fortunately, lost a lot of records. I said probably my daughter's enrollment forms, you know, from 20 years ago are out there. But luckily, I mean, we're very fortunate, right? If we, if we lost a building to disaster like this, that one is one that obviously all of us can recreate what's there. No, no potential loss of life or injury threats. OCDC building had a little bit of heat damage, and luckily, again, we saw a citizen come by on his way to work at OCDC and called that in. So not a lot left of the portable, and your esteemed retired firefighter chairman did get a good chance to go look at it, too.
It was pretty amazing that, I haven't seen a fire go up the wall like that in a long time.
Well, what we found out is that basketball coaches for CYS had just dropped quite a few bags of basketballs, and they were stored against that one wall.
Really?
So the fire appears to have been electrical in nature, but the one wall was kind of burned out probably because of burning rubber. So that, that's why that one got a little hotter, we think.
Yeah.
So we'll, again, our insurance company has been fantastic. Polk County Fire was great, and our neighbors OCDC and partner CYS were all working together to make the best of a bad situation.
So what are our options with the insurance settlement? Because we don't really need the building, do we?
Well, you know, one of the reasons that we had the Willamette Estee preschool leave is to maybe expand CTE programs here. For example, that was one thing that we thought of in connections with the Community Services Consortium. Having that facility back would be helpful, having something for CYS if they're unable to secure other long-term arrangements, other partners that we've had over time. So there are some other possibilities. People have always really wanted a welcome center, someplace where maybe we could have volunteers and people here to people new to the community, coordinate some of our emergency services work that we do for folks in the community. So I think there are options, whether or not that's the portable or we do some other kind of reconstruction there.
But do the funds have to go back into capital improvement or to capital?
They'll, we have full replacement cost insurance, but they'll replace whatever we, they don't write us a check, and then we get to decide if, if we order a portable and replace it with that, that's how much they'll pay us. If we replaced it with something else, then they would only replace that.
They wouldn't replace the equivalent of it cost-wise?
We, if, yeah, if.
So we decided to put a welcome center.
Somewhere else.
Somewhere else.
No.
And CYS is insured, too.
Right.
They, they just really had, they had.
We don't, we probably don't know the numbers yet and stuff.
No.
So.
But they won't just write us a check to put something else somewhere else, so they'll, whatever we put here, they'll replace, they'll pay for.
What if we did nothing?
Then they would pay us nothing.
Really?
Right. Replacement of the item, replacement cost, replacement value. So that thing's 20 years old, it's probably depreciated worth is probably $20,000. They'll replace, they'll get us a brand-new $65,000 portable, single portable.
But they won't give us $65,000?
But they won't give us $65,000. And if we put a stick-built shed out there, they would pay us the $20,000 to build a stick-built shed, for example.
So we got a good deal on premiums?
I'm not much of an expert on insurance values, so.
And the insurance game begins.
Yes. That, again, I mean, yeah. They're, once we get a bid, well, we already have a bid on the demolition and things like that, they'll just write us a check for all of those costs right off.
Any other questions?
Oh, we do have a $10,000 deductible on that, sorry, so.
You're up.
Okay, I have just a few policies as we continue down this path. So I'm just going to go through. The first one is EBBA. It's out of Support Services. It is specific to infection control and bloodborne pathogens. It is policy changes to language addressing standard precautions, and really new language related to infectious control and training annually. We already do this through our Safe Schools Training for staff, and so again, this is just an update of that policy into what we already have in practice. And then we'll be working on developing just the procedural plan for both staff and students of if this happens, what do they, what does everyone do? So that's the first one. The second one is actually the removal or the deletion of the old policy that is specific to HBV and bloodborne pathogens. So again, with that addition, we'll
So again, with that addition, we'll be removing the old one. The third one is ECAB, again, in Support Services, dealing with vandalism, malicious mischief, or theft. These are minor changes to the policy language with new language addressed, really focusing on if staff members fail to report. Again, when this stuff happens, our staff has been very good at doing that. But again, that language just needs to be put in. It also has language in there that the district does, if this does happen, is not responsible for personal property on district property. I want to just be clear, just because the policy says we also have union contracts, so there could be different language. And I know for a fact that we do have a little bit of a different language in the contract. So again, we sort of keep those separate, but it is part of really using both documents as we go through if these types of situations do take place. The next one, EEAB, again, Support Services, is really focused on school bus scheduling and routing. This, again, is additional language as it relates to planning and organizing for school bus routes, just really to ensure safety, student safety, which was not addressed in our current policy. Again, when you look at that policy, a lot of those we are already doing within transportation or in the process of relooking at. I know Cece, we've been looking at potentially new software and things to help us do that. So again, this is just bringing that policy up to date. Some of those steps, we, again, I will, will share already are in place.
So I'm assuming it's a typo. I don't think Transportation Supervisor in the first line is supposed to have brackets around it anymore?
Oh, as many times as we read through it, yes. We will get that corrected on the, on the second reading. The next one is GBEDA, and this is tied to personnel. This is specific to drug and alcohol testing for transportation personnel. And again, this, really in this language, it just is new additional language articulating that the district has some sort of provider that we contract with for the alcohol and drug testing for our transportation personnel. So that was not in our current policy. So we are putting that in. The district's current vendor, just so you are aware, is BioMed that we contract with. The next one, GBC, is again a personnel. This is dealing with staff ethics. There are some language changes that really articulate the prohibited use of official position or financial gains as a staff member. This also addresses not only the employee, but also employees' relatives or members of the household of the employee or the business of the employee or the relative that may be associated with that. So there, again, this is new language that's in there. There is also language related to any conflicts of interest, and that really articulates that, that an employee would need to identify or share that and notify the district if they felt that there was a conflict of interest. It also does a better job in the definition of what a relative includes within that, and then also gives clarity on what is a gift and the amounts of those gifts. So again, this is just a, it's a cleanup of the current policy to really update it of where it should be.
And we have this, essentially, these same words for board ethics?
Correct. It's very similar to what we have for, for the Board of Directors. Again, when it comes to ethics, both employees and boards are really working from the same lens.
Want the other typo that I saw just before I fell asleep?
That was the typo you said?
The title. It's prohibited use of officials' position for financial gain, I think, rather than or financial gain.
We will get that corrected on the second reading. And then the last one is IIAID. It's tied to instruction. Specifically, it's called special interest materials. This is a new policy. And I want to really focus that this is dealing with supplemental materials from non-school sources for use in the classroom. It is important that we use supplemental materials, really to enrich the education of our students. We want these materials to make sure that they align with the standards and what we are already using in our materials. And so again, this is just a policy to put in place of how we go about that process. It really is focused on the principal having that authority in conjunction with the different departments within the district to move forward with that. We have given this policy to CEA, because obviously it affects from the, from the teaching perspective more than anything. And so if they have any concerns or questions, you know, we will get that from them. But we, we want to make sure when, when there are policies that are specific to our teachers, that we make sure that they have the ability to have, have information about that. So we gave that to the leadership group a month ago. I haven't heard anything, but again, I know that we meet next week. And if there's any changes or recommendations, I'm sure that they will give those to us, and then we can work through those potential recommendations at our next board meeting.
Are we doing this now? This seems cumbersome.
This is first reading.
I would say yes. I think one of the things that we do have supplemental materials, I don't think, we have never had a policy that is associated with it. So this will allow us to start that process to say, what are the, from an administrative regulation perspective, so how, what does that process look like? I know that, and we're talking with everyone so far, we need to put some procedures in place to align, because I think that's one of the things that we continue to talk about, not only with administration, but with, with the union leadership, of how we continue to do that so both students and staff can, what I call have the art of teaching and learning, but be able to do it that we're being consistent across the school district.
Does it, I mean, if you read this, it can lead you wondering, so if I'm a teacher and I want to have the kids pull up a website that hasn't been part of the curriculum to look at pictures of something that we're studying, I got to go down to the principal's office and see if that's okay? That seems like that would be nonsensical. So how, I guess my question is how, how do we, how do we implement this in a way that it's not burdensome for either the principals or for the...
Right. And I think that's where we're going to work with both the association and within the administration to put those in place. Because I agree with you, Don, we don't need that. I mean, we want to give teachers the ability and authority to make those choices. I think it's more in the, as we start to look at things, and I think more on the instructional technology end, where there are other programs. Do all these types of programs that are supplemental align to what we're trying to accomplish? We have great work to do there, because I know from, you know, in conversations with both the association and then administration, we need to have better alignment. This is a first, I'm going to say first step of us moving in that direction as a school district, so that we do have some protocols and procedures in place to be able to say, yes, we know this is a process of how you get that approved. We want it, I don't want a lot of red tape where it comes to the board or it's having to come to me. We have extremely good principals within the school district and, again, good union leadership that those conversations will continue to happen of how we go about that together. So this is not a big, I don't, I don't want this to be red tape. I want it to just have a process that we have the ability for our staff to use materials that they see fit to, that align with both the standards and where we're trying to go as a school district.
I guess my input would be let's use common sense and then fix the policy later on. Or amend it with an AR that explains how you're actually supposed to implement.
Yep.
Okay, I'll show it.
Nope, good question. And then the only other piece for me is, I know all of you, and you each have one at your table, we do have the 2017-18 audit. One of my, or I'm just looking for guidance. Would you like, in the February meeting, to have Bolt, Carlisle, and Smith come to present the audit? Or do you trust Cece and I that we can give a nice briefing of, of the audit for the 1718 school year?
We trust you.
Okay, so Cece and I will put something together for, for our reports at the February meeting. Okay? That is it from you?
Okay. So we're down to the consent agenda.
Skip your board report.
Board report, upcoming things. We got a PLC meeting on the 28th. Sorry about that. Skip right by that. And our next board meeting is February 4th at 6:30. And now we're to the consent agenda. So do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Do we approve the consent agenda?
Do I hear a second?
I second.
We all second.
We had three of them. We'll take Darcy.
Okay.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. And now we're down to the business agenda. And I'm assuming it's back to you again.
All right, I'm all your business tonight. Yes, we have two budget-related items for you. And I was, as I was sitting here, I'm realizing that the one we held the hearing on is fine, but the other is not actually on the correct form. So I'm trying to print out the incorrect form for you. So initially, if you'd like to take up the issue of the supplemental budget for 2018-19 to reflect the award of the 21st Century Community Learning Center grant. So again, that's...
You forgot to write down the words we were supposed to say to make...
I didn't write down your motion. I'm so sorry. You're right, I didn't. All you would have to do is move to adopt the resolution as presented.
I would move that we would adopt the resolution adopting a supplemental budget for 2018-19 as presented.
Motion by Don and second by Jerry. Any discussion? We've had a lot of discussion already. But any last-minute questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. And now Cece gets to explain the bus thing.
The bus thing. And again, I'm sorry, and I just printed off the forms, because this is not actually, it is a, the revenue is a transfer from the general fund to our bus lease fund, but the appropriation is actually a supplemental budget. So this is not quite the right form. The supplemental budget is less than a 10% change in the original appropriation. Therefore, it does not require the public hearing, but it does require you to give us the authority to spend a little bit more on the bus leases than we had originally budgeted. That is partly from a couple of things. One is we added some seat belts to these buses, and that's going to increase the cost. But also, interest rates are rising, and the interest rate actually took quite a jump on the lease between the time we budgeted and the time we actually were able to contract for the buses. So that has increased the cost of the current year lease by $2,039. That money, remember, is a transfer from the general fund, and we do have money in that transfer appropriation. That transfer appropriation covers our, the amount that we deposit into, we pay for our QSCAB, our Full Faith and Credit Bond. So we transfer money out of the general fund for that. First of all, to pay the interest the federal government doesn't pay, which, who knows if the federal government's going to pay that or not? And it also goes into our sinking fund, which is the money we are saving to make a balloon payment in 2025. And also, we transfer from the general fund to our Get Fit Employee Wellness Program. That sinking fund, we're a little ahead. We can borrow a little bit of that money to cover these bus leases. Or our Get Fit program typically doesn't use their fully allotted budget, and we can get the money there. So I'm not concerned about the general fund appropriation, but we do need to move to, resolve to appropriate enough to cover the bus leases, or else I'll just have to go, I don't know what, I don't know how that works if you don't approve that, so...
Comes out of your salary. Comes out of your salary, right?
Okay. Still have to appropriate it and move it over wherever it comes from, but, yeah. So that would be a resolution to...
So move by Don to the resolution transfer regarding the buses?
It's actually not a resolution transfer. This will be a supplemental budget. I need to get you the correct form off the printer. I know. I printed off the wrong thing. Sorry.
I will formally move to adopt a supplemental budget appropriated and moving $2,039 from the Debt Service Fund 302 into the Debt Service Fund 302, but bus replacement. So how can you be moving it from one fund to the same fund?
It's not a move, it's an addition, so it's a change in appropriation.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, we think we got it right now?
Yeah.
We got a motion. Do we have a second? Do I hear a second? Darcy seconds it. All those in favor, raise your right hand. You got your $2,000.
The most work I'd have to do for $2,000 in one...
I know, right? Yeah, I mean, Santander and Leasing Company Bank has their $2,000.
Okay.
Thank you.
We are down to comments by individual board members.
I would like to share something.
Sure.
I was running errands before Christmas break and went into Walmart and found a group of middle schoolers from Talmadge, I believe, there. Ms. Newbeck, her leadership class, and then maybe some web kids. And they were very polite and all together with huge carts of toys and were so happy and excited to be there. And Ms. Newbeck, I recognized her, and then the counselor I also recognized. And they were amazing. They talked to me about what they did. They took me on the bus so I could see stuff. Then I followed them, I ended up spending like five hours with them. I followed them to a pizza place and then followed them to the courthouse in town where they left all the presents in this amazing room downstairs with so many gifts from different organizations. And it was awesome. It was so cool to just have that surprise when I was having a rough day. So it was really great to see and see so many kids understand why they were doing what they were doing and why it was important to the community and kids coming here. So it was really great.
Thank you. Yeah, I just can't say enough. My students were raising close to $3,000 for choice of jobs.
Wow. It was awesome. It was great.
Any other comments? We survived the holidays, except for losing modular.
Yeah, Dave Dodson, our maintenance man, who will be retiring, leaving us June 30th, has said, "Well, that's my first school fire in 31 years." And I said, "Thanks for checking that off your list."
So with no third, nothing else going on? We are adjourned.